Do we have any motions?
Motion to accept.
Is that for both?
Both.
There's a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstaining, it's unanimous. Next item, announcements, and I don't know if we have any announcements, so...
I didn't have any in the packet.
No. And next item is public comment.
Somebody's coming.
At this moment...
Boy, that was optimistic.
No, footprint.
Could be upstairs.
It's Dick.
It's Dick?
Oh, good, we need Dick.
Hi, Dick.
We need you down here, have questions. For the record, no. Is my TV show gonna be on?
Yes, it will.
I thought it already was, but I'll double check.
I'll stop by that studio.
I'll send you an email.
I'm gonna stop by.
Okay, I'll give you that.
Okay, thanks for that public comment. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to our, to accept donations to Grassmere Town Hall Restoration Fund. We have twenty-five dollars from Girl Scout troop, two zero eight seven one, and five hundred dollars from Tri-Town Youth Soccer League, travel division. Do they have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second, and any...
To authorize the chair to sign the deposit voucher.
Thank you.
That would help. And your second includes that? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstaining? It's unanimous. And we have our, um, letters of thank you to go out to them, too?
We can do that.
We usually do, I just wanna make sure that they wind up in a signature form.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Next item is selectmen's discussion. New business review department goals for two thousand and eleven. We had gone through, discussed our goals last time, and the department goals we just put off for the next meeting. I guess the best thing to do at this point was, I have two departments, PD, and I also have administration roles, and I'll just go through that. And as far as PD, PD meets every year, and they review the goals, very similar to what the Board of Selectmen does with their goals, to see, um, review them for the prior year's goals, go through the list, take off whatever's been accomplished, anything that's ongoing, they put back on, or any new items that come up. And they basically wind up with ten goals. One of the things on the top of their list is a ten percent reduction in false alarms through public education and enforcement. And another one is every employee will attend at least one outside training per year. Develop a plan and seek funding to update the radio system to include repeaters, new portables and narrow banding, which is a multi-year project. Reduce DWI-related crashes by twenty percent through proactive and aggressive enforcement to include checkpoints and/or saturation patrols. Number five is to complete either a citizenry academy or open house event. The sixth is increase press releases by five percent to include major arrests and events. Work with local media to develop a working relationship in order to distribute our message. This can include the introduction of Twitter and other electronic means to convey our message. Begin to research and implement scanning procedures and necessary equipment for efficient record storage and retentions. And I can say, um, when it comes to PD, record, uh, storage and retention is one issue that's ongoing, 'cause they have to keep accessing those files over the years, and their files, the, um, the sliding type files that we have upstairs and planning, that originally idea came from PD, because that's expanded and expanded over the years for them. Institute a monthly forum open to all personnel to discuss current issues to suggest change and ideas for the good of the agency. Uh, paperwork reductions, begin to reduce communication and patrol paperwork, a reduction in five percent of the paper expenditures from two thousand and nine. Examples are non-printed CFS reports, town accident reports, increase the availability of online forms, i.e. pistol permit apps, alarm permit apps, ride-along. And the tenth is to work as an agency to get a manageable budget pass which will allow the continued level of services presently delivered using the current staffing levels. And, um, this is, uh, goals that are put together by the, basically, the entire department. So, if anybody has any questions on that, I'll try to answer them for you. Seeing none at the moment? Does anybody else want to, uh, go through their department goals, or...
Sure. I met with the, the fire chief, and we discussed three goals looking, um, short-term, medium-term, and long-term. One of the goals that the chief would like to tackle this year, recognizes the, um, the shortage of officers in the call force. But in order to rectify that, he envisions a system, an equitable system, where he can get call officers fairly even in rank and responsibility to full-time officers. So, he's in the process of trying to develop that method of either training, selection, to be able to come out with a system where there's equity, so you're not wondering or trying to figure out, are you a call officer, a full-time officer? What happens when a call officer is in charge of full-time personnel? Um, there's, there's equity there. And then the goal would be to establish at least two call officers at each station, Station seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, with some of the retirements and people leaving. That's one thing that's lacking currently, is officers in the call force. A second goal, I mean, that goes along with one of the things we discussed with the replacement of the ambulances, ambulances, is to, um, develop a, a revenue stream utilizing that third ambulance, through details, transfers. And then the fourth, or third goal, recognizes the economic situation and the very remote possibility in the near term of getting a central station. And, um, what the chief is envisioning, and I believe he put it into his CIP, um, program, is a renovation of the three existing stations to at least pull the department forward for the next ten years or more, until, um, a central station becomes a, a possibility, or maybe never comes to fruition. And some of the things we discussed there were the, a phased-in approach, some, increasing some of the bays at Station eighteen, here on Church Street, and then utilizing some of the existing building space to, um, create more office space and, um, administration, administrative space. Station seventeen, up on Terrell Hill, would probably be the least expensive station to renovate. And then we threw out a couple of ideas. I know, a couple of years ago, we talked about Station nineteen and relocating it. At some point in the future, the Police Department may need to expand, and maybe that project can be combined, where Station nineteen is moved on that portion of county land, and then the existing Station nineteen could be utilized as its commercial property. That could even be used to offset the sale of that sta- station, to, to offset the cost of construction. So, the long-term goal would be looking at each of those stations, figuring out how best they can be renovated to go into the future and meet the needs of the community.
Nick, on the, um, third goal that you were just talking about with the development of the central station, um, as far as the expansion of the, or, um, modification of the existing station, um, was there any, um, discussion about the possibility of phasing in the central station over towards the, uh, over on Grassmere, by the property that we have by the transfer station, or not?
We, we didn't discuss that at all. I, I think the mindset is, uh, the central station is really years away. I don't know how you could phase it in, unless you were gonna build a portion of it over a long period of time, but not use it until it was...
Yeah, well, I guess what I meant by that was, as far as the planning stage? In other words, you know, it might be five or six years out before you could even think of developing an area, but if there was an area, or if, if that was, might, might've been a possibility.
And I'm sure those discussions can be...
Any other questions, Nick?
Can I go back to you? You just hit on something.
Sure.
Was there anything in the Police Department goals about their infrastructure? I mean, that their building is getting, is, parts of it are a little tired. Is there anything that was discussed in goals in terms of some rehab of the Police Department building the structure itself?
Uh, no, I think the, the, at, at this point, though, the, uh, big issue is with the radio system as far as communication for the officer's safety.
I guess I appreciate that, and, and we know that is a top priority, but would, would there be any harm in having a discussion, and the chief is here, we can, I can ask him, I guess, directly, but would there be any harm in getting, you know, a group together at PD to talk about what's needed, and then we phase it in over the next few years, rather than waiting till next year? Or is that something you've already got under, in the works?
The goals you just read are the two hundred, two thousand and ten goals. My two thousand and eleven goals indicate that we are looking at, or the, um, excuse me, the, the infrastructure of the building itself.
Okay, 'cause that's been, that's been talked about a lot over the last year. I just wanted to make sure that we're working towards that, so...
Right, we have, um, I've already costed out siding the backside of the building. We've got some rot on, um, starting on that, and so, and I'll get you the other copy. I apologize, I thought those were the two thousand and eleven goals that I picked.
That's okay. All right, well, that's, that's, that's a, that's a better, uh, education for the board, 'cause we'll have the two thousand and ten and the two thousand and eleven for that. Okay, no, thank you, chief.
Nick, just a quick question. Chief, do you foresee in the, the near future, the need for more space?
Absolutely. We've got some unused space, but not nearly enough that would rectify the spacious that we have presently. When you say near future, I would go within the next ten years.
Yeah, I was thinking five.
Realistically, I, um, you know, the economy as it is.
Right. Right, okay. Uh, anybody else? Steve?
I mean, with the trustees, till next week.
Okay. And Dave?
I've been carrying a list of, uh, goals from the Tran, Public Works for three weeks now, and sure enough, I left them home. They were, so I will definitely make a note to myself to bring them in next week, but they were all related to, um, solid waste fees. And if we wish to institute a new fee, you know, on various aspects, and I'll cover that next week.
Okay. One of the others is administration, and they're, um, basically five items in the goals for that. One, um, is the ongoing revenue collection office, uh, that we've been discussing probably as long as I've been on the board. Also, there are need for new HVAC units, uh, looking at vendors for the financial software that we're all aware of. Finish the painting, as it's been, uh, getting done very slowly. And relocate, uh, GTV equipment, uh, possibly to Dave's office behind that wall on the end of the room.
Not all of it, just the stuff that's in here.
Right.
Okay.
Right, so basically, uh...
Cut out in that wall, so that Andrew would be behind the wall.
Right.
Controlling.
We don't need to see him, then?
Probably a window.
A window.
He can wave, yes.
Yeah, and, and what Andrew's requested is two-way glass, so we can't see him, but he can see us. Okay. Any questions on those? Okay, so this sounds like this'll be an ongoing discussion for probably another, uh, another week. Is next week okay, or do we need to put it off for two weeks?
It'll be two weeks, because you're not meeting...
I'm not meeting till, I believe it's Thursday.
A week from this Wednesday.
Okay, all right, so we'll, we'll have it back on for two weeks. Okay? And the, uh, next item would be, uh, all boards meeting, uh, coming up, discuss scheduling and topics for that. One of the things also, um, on the scheduling, um... The night of the week, it's gonna be, uh...
Why not do it Monday?
If Mon- Monday, if Monday works, uh...
I, I say that because I don't think any other committee meets on a Monday. The school board does.
Just GTV.
But that's just, but they're, they're first and third, right? School board?
Yes. GTV meets on one of those. I'm not sure which one, but I have them out.
My vote's for Monday.
Well, maybe that one Monday that GTV does not meet?
And the school board doesn't meet?
Right, as long as they line...
Or do they wanna do it as a meeting? I can ask them. 'Cause we usually invite them, right?
Yeah.
Right, oh yeah, oh yeah. Okay, so, uh, hopefully, one of those Mondays will work.
And what month?
The only thing I will say with, the school board, there's a, there's a tendency that there's a lot of things going on at the end of the year, and if you're talking about doing it in June, they're busy meetings, the last couple, the first and that, the last couple of meetings in June are busy. So, if that's where we were shooting for, then, and they don't meet typically in the summer, so...
Else we do at the end of May.
May thirtieth is a holiday.
That's right.
May twenty-third, you have the second public hearing.
Okay.
After this one tonight. So, that would leave, like, May sixteenth, which wouldn't be, that's next week, unless I've noticed.
No. No, 'cause we need to put it in gender together, some sort of an agenda, and get, get those out.
The second Monday of June.
Second Monday of June is June thirteenth.
You wanna try for that?
Shoot for it, yeah, see if the school is...
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Admissible to it.
Okay.
Okay.
And you wanna have this at the school? Media center?
Yeah.
Probably, yeah.
Okay.
So, next thing, we have to come up with, what our topics are.
I, I think we started discussing them, um, last week, or the week before.
I think it was two weeks ago.
And it was, I, I think the theme was, if you build it, they will come, that you were discussing in terms of economic development and...
The other thing, too, is solicit the committees as to what they wanna, let's see, are there any themes that may, that may be out there? And maybe...
You want, you want a topic, though, they'll bring them all together...
Right, but I guess...
To discuss.
Why not ask them for two things? One, talk to us about something that's pressing for your committee. So, if it's Parks and Recreation, maybe it's something that's pressing there. However, then, talk to us, you know, what about something else that you wanna talk about that's, that's really not related to your committee? You know, so, you'll, you'll get a wider, you'll cast a wider net.
Important to the town?
Important to the town, yeah, overall. And then from there, we can see, you know, when, when you get the results back from eight or ten different committees, you'll kinda have a pretty good... Now, then we're gonna run into the issue of, well, we're not meeting until this time. Well, that's good, but you don't necessarily, if that does not happen, then the chair should just fill that out, you know? This way, we have topics ready to go by that meeting in June.
Okay. Uh, just one other thought. Anything from the last one that we had, that we should do as, let's say, a report?
The last one that we did...
Was the, um, that was the, uh, the brainstorming?
Yeah, we talked a lot about, um, we talked about creating a committee, that we were gonna, you know, uh, make the process more efficient, I think, for promoting business, and I'm not so sure we ever, anything ever evolved out of that.
I don't remember raising that.
It was a lot of good discussion.
I'm sorry, but nothing...
It was great discussion, but I don't think it was, we didn't, it wasn't really well-executed on after that. That's just my remembrance of it. So, I think what's gonna hap- I mean, if we do something like that, one of us is gonna have to take the lead, or somebody's gonna have to take the lead with, either on another board, to kinda chair that and facilitate, to, to, to kinda steward that a little bit, 'cause...
Well, I didn't mean to, a, a repeat of that, just, what I meant was just a report as to where, where, wh- what came of that. I mean, on the ish topics that I discussed were traffic and so forth. I mean, and there was a lot of, uh, requests for, uh, about traffic, about roundabouts, and I mean, and we, we have, uh, addressed the Wallace Road issue.
I will say this, this is just me speaking, I'm not, you know, I would, I believe that an all-boards meeting is a wonderful time to pull out and review the master plan, and, which was been done and updated, and where are we at? Because in that master plan, it has everything that we do, um, a lot of what we, it has everything, it has a lot of what we do. And I'd be curious to see, when you review it, are we executing on the plan? That's, that should be our guiding document moving forward. And I don't see, you know, maybe that should be homework for this all-boards meeting, is to re- review the master plan, um, are we on the right course? And if not, how do we get back on course? How do we facilitate executing the plan? Spend a lot of time and energy coming up with that thing. And in that plan, there's educational goals, because the school does part of that. It's not just about facilities, it's about traffic, and it's a whole, it runs the gamut.
Well, then I see there's two things. I think what we should do is, we should try to pull the minutes from that meeting, or there afterwards, just to take a look at it for a possible review of what's transpired since then, and also, uh, the master plan issues that you're just talking about.
I don't know, that's just me. I, I don't know, I don't know if the board agrees.
I especially like the, uh, the master plan review, and to refresh not only this board, but all the committees, just their role in that plan. And, you know, it's not done in any other forum, unless we ask for it to be done.
Well, it's done, done in a planning forum.
Planning board, but it needs to be all boards, so they all play a role.
But it's not just planning spearheads it, right? And they collate, coordinate the whole thing. But in terms of the execution of it, and the implementation of the plan...
Everyone's responsible.
Everyone is responsible.
Right.
So, that's, so from my perspective, why not take a look at that in detail? And maybe, like, if it's, let's say it's a library, or Parks and Rec, whatever department, here's what it says, what we should be thinking about doing. Either we're doing it, or our goals are in line with that. I mean, it's great that we have these goals, but are they in line with our master plan? So, that's our, supposed to be our guiding document, but if we got goals that are not jiving with it, then we're out of sync. And if, and if something is in the master plan that shouldn't be there anymore, then let's have that discussion. Why shouldn't it? But, so, we talk about, let's just say, traffic as a, as a, as a, as an example, the fact that we have tried to d- address some of these problematic intersections, where, I think we're going in that direction. Nick talked before about fire stations and, and, you know, then our goals should align with making sure that they're up to date, you know? Those are the types of things, uh, whether it be conservation, Parks and Recreation, other, other departments and committees that we have, DPW, our road infrastructure, are we on track, you know, with that? And I, I think it's a good exercise. Reminds everybody of what we should be doing.
So, evaluate their goals in light of the master plan?
Yeah.
And their accomplishments, goals and accomplishments?
I mean, the big buzzword in, in the business world, two, three years ago, was, you know, the, the big things were alignment, so that everybody is, is going in the same direction, and it were, and then the other thing was execution of goals and execution of plans, whether that's buzzwords or not, it...
I, I think it's good when, the all-boards are good. I think you hit the key word, is that, that word, execution after. I, and I would say that, you know, when we look back at what was executed, I don't, I wouldn't, what's the best way to put it? I think different departments, I mean, everyone does, different departments do different things going forward, but I wouldn't, I don't think it was, it was set in a, in a, in a manner where everyone was, was working with each department going forward with that, and what, and what that execution was, and I don't even know what the measurement was from last year. In other words, we didn't put out saying, here's what we will get accomplished this year. And that's what I, when you say execution, if someone says execution to me, it's, well, what's, what was, what was the measurement? What was the goal, and how are we gonna measure it? I don't believe we did that last year.
Yeah, but I think we're talking two different things, because I think, I think Scott's talking the master plan, and I think you're talking about the last all-boards meeting that we had.
Right.
Well, I thought we were tying both in right now, but...
Well, that's what I said, I saw it as two separate issues. I saw the master plan as one issue, and the other, other one is to, um, when we had the brainstorming session, was some of those things that we were, that we, we came, came out with some, uh, the results of that brainstorming session, and we did do some things, but I, we haven't sat down and looked at that and said, well, here's what came out of that, and here's, here's what, what we've done. And my whole point was just, perhaps that's something that we should do, since we did it with this group once before, and at least put on the table, this is what we did the last night we met, and this is what's transpired then, and the master plan is a, is a, is another issue. Now, some of those things that came out of our brainstorming will fit in with the master plan. So, I mean, they are tied together that way. So, if that's what is desired to do, there's two things that we need to do, is to review the master plan and review those...
The minutes we've left.
Results of those brainstorming sessions, and just...
The last year or the year before?
Year before.
I think it was the year before. I think it was the year before.
Okay, and now ask the question, are your committee goals and the execution of those goals in alignment with the master plan?
Basically. And of course, everything re- re- depends upon funding.
True.
Sometimes it, you know...
There are some things on that master plan that, um, the opportunities have passed, let's say.
That's why it's updated every so often.
'Cause I just referenced it today, when someone brought something up, and I looked, I said, oh, can't do that, that one was old.
Okay. Anything else on that subject? Okay. So, the next item then is going to be all business.
What time did you want that, at six o'clock, regular time? 'Cause I know, uh, most committees start at seven. If we're just meeting for that purp- well, we could have a business meeting at six.
Yeah, let's do that, let's do that.
The all-boards at seven?
Yeah, let's do that, because other people perhaps are a little different time scheduled than us, so...
And you'll do your business meeting at the high school, right? Same place?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. Okay, so, uh, all business, weekly construction update on the roundabout. Do you have anything on that, David?
I, I have the report from the Public Works, so I'll read through this one.
Okay, that'll make up for not having the department goals.
The, this is...
I'm sorry.
This is a report from the Public Works for the, uh, the end of the second full week of, um, resumption on the, uh, south mast work, and also the roundabout at Wallace Road. The construction firm, DeLory, is still being held to a completion date, which is twenty-one May. Plans are, they will complete early. They have proposed a final site walk on the Friday, the thirteenth.
I don't remember thinking that one.
I know.
It just dawned on me.
Very appropriate.
Anyways, work, a list of items which were completed in the second full week. They raised the, uh, storm drain castings on East Union Street, the infrared, the castings into the asphalt. Brick pavers were along the sidewalk of the roundabout were put in place. Finished loaming, um, the abutting properties, and also some gravelling along the shoulders of East Union. Also, hydro seeding, uh, was done of the new asphalt. They, there were asphalt cores... They, there were asphalt cores taken of the sidewalks in the porous pavement, and the town is waiting on a report from the testing company. They replaced a barrel planter at one resident. Uh, this planter in a, a person's yard was damaged during construction, and the resident was pleased with the replacement barrel. They also finished pavement repairs to the Gulfstown Truck Center, and to another property that's on Lancelot Avenue.
Thank you. So Friday the thirteenth, the big day.
Welcome.
Okay, any questions?
Yes, I wasn't quite sure the, before the planter, what was, did you read, read that one again? I wasn't sure what that was all about.
Asphalt cores?
Yeah, what's, I.
The core samples.
Yeah, well.
Drill out core samples, test if proper thickness.
Of the.
Compaction.
Other, other, other ta- other pavement?
Yeah, of the core, and also the, um, the, um, porous stuff, to make sure that all meets the specification.
All right, thank you.
Um, I'm just wondering, are there any new updates on the other, the sewer? I know that's another project, but since we're talking about construction, is there anything that's, we wanna be known? I mean, I drive by there every day, and.
I do too.
And from what I can see, the, um, they're in the thick of it, because there's, I mean, there's a lot going on, but I, I mean, I'm seeing signs for businesses, I'm seeing a much more proactive attempt to let people know that businesses are open, that there's, I know that the police have been there numerous times in terms of the traffic, and it, it seems as if it's, it's going as well as one could expect it would go, in light of the fact that you're ripping up a major road at a major intersection. So it seems, eh, from my observations, again, I don't live there, but I do try to make it a point to travel through there at least two, three times a day, that, um, every effort, seems like every effort's being made to keep traffic flowing, keep the acknowledgement that businesses are open, and I think, you know, I just wanna give a little bit of credit.
I, uh, you're right on those observations, uh, many more signs this year compared to last, referring to businesses on the left and right being open. The signs are closer in to the actual construction zone, uh, as you approach the zone. Also this week, uh, the intersection of Daniel Plummer and Mast, uh, during the day went on blinking red, blinking yellow lights, with a, a traffic controller in the intersection, so that they're coordinating the, the flow of traffic through that intersection with the alternating one lanes. Because the, the trench is now approaching that intersection, there's very little room to stack cars up as they approach the intersection. There, and that, of course, there is a SOR Commission meeting this week that I'll be attending, and that's one of the progress reports being discussed at that meeting.
And I'm gonna ask the chief, uh, as far as you know, has traffic been?
Been traffic, uh, Mr. Leffler Pierce earlier last week, or maybe in the last week, we discussed the intersection, we can try to maintain it, but it's open across.
Okay, thank you.
I believe you've had, for the most part, two officers there, maybe sometimes three, but at least two, and that their presence has been very helpful, thank you.
Any other questions on this subject?
No, I'm just gonna say that, I, I know Mr. Mr. Leffler Pierce has spoken to the chief regarding that traffic, like, when that went from, you know, when it was operating going green, red, and yellow, and when they went to the flashing yellow, the people, it gave people a better idea of what was going on, but they were, some people were trying to work the light versus what the person directed, so that was a, that was a big, made a big difference. Thank you.
Okay, good, good, all right, um, I guess we'll go on to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Not that I'm aware of.
On CBA, Matt.
Hi, Anna.
You do? Okay.
Uh, two hundred and fifty committee?
Yep.
Uh, tickets are on sale for the gala ball, and, um, you can purchase those tickets. Kathy Ball, the town clerk's office, has been very generous to sell tickets here at Town Hall. You can also get them at, uh, the different businesses, and if you wouldn't mind, I'd rattle some of those off, Ace Hardware selling tickets, Apothica, and the Village Tressel here in the Village, and the Bag Lunch Diner, and Two Friends Bakery in, uh, Pinardville, so.
Okay.
Um, tickets are thirty-five dollars, and if you buy a table of eight, it's two hundred and fifty dollars, so it's, that's only until June one, so, uh, and encourage people to do that. Tomorrow I'm having a meeting with, uh, regarding the block party and the logistics for that, so our, our police and fire, and I believe we have somebody from DPW, I think, attending that, it's a small group, and, and we're gonna be, you know, kinda laying all that out. So plans are, are well underway there, and, um, it's shaping up to be a, a great event. Um, I was, also wanna thank, uh, Evelyn Redman, she's been helping me with the finances. I mean, this has been very difficult, because, um, the vast majority of the money that we're raising for all the two fifty celebrations is coming from private donations, and they're all coming in at little bits and pieces, and, um, she's been really good at keeping, keeping me and, and the committee apprised of, of, uh, of donations, and I, I, I know that we're gonna publicly recognize all of the different folks that are contributing, but I do wanna thank any, all the businesses and individuals who have been donating to the cause. Um, we're still probably about five thousand dollars away from where we wanna go, but things are looking pretty good now, I'm, I'm sleeping better, um, with regard to this, so, um, and I wanted to let everyone know that one of the pieces of the two fiftieth that I don't want to kinda, people to forget about is, we, it's, it's not only about the education of our, of our two hundred and fifty years of history, and the celebration, which is a lot of the events that are going on, but we wanna leave by a legacy, leave behind a legacy. The Historic District Commission, um, has raised, I think, five or six thousand dollars towards a statue, um, which we wanna leave behind as our, I guess, our thank you and our present to the community, um, so we're about five to seven thousand short, I think, on, on that targeted goal. So, um, it's, it's our committee's endeavor that any monies left over will go to that fund, and that we would be in a position to fully fund it and, and commission the work ASAP by this fall, and get that, you know, commission, so that next year, the statue would be, uh, would be put in place. So, um, again, thank you to the generosity of the folks in Gulfstown, and, uh, continue to help us out, there's like little buckets around town, and if you'd like to write a check out, that would be awesome as well, um, just put on there, Town of Gulfstown, two hundred and fiftieth, and, uh, you'll go to the right spot, so, things are looking good, and, um, appreciate everybody's help.
Dave? I saw some, uh, work being done on a, a site for the two fiftieth just last weekend, you want?
Yeah, we had a bunch of volunteers.
Any local firms?
We're trying to, uh, prep, um, a, a field, we've had a private landowner, uh, let us use their, their field, and this is where the main stage and all the music is gonna be held, as well as some other vendors, the Blundo family has been generous enough to allow us to use that. We had a bunch of volunteers from the Gulfstown Main Street Program who went and started, again, on their own to, uh, I guess, remove, there's a lot of rocks in that, in that field, and they're, they're prepping that field for the two hundred and fiftieth, so if you saw them, um, you know, there's, I, I don't know everyone's name, so I'm not gonna rattle off a bunch of names, but it was mostly the Gulfstown Main Street crew, um, that did that, and, um, if I do get some names, I'll publicly acknowledge them, but I don't, I, I know most of them, but I don't wanna, I, I, I don't know them all, and I don't wanna slight anybody.
I think that's a good idea. Um, I do wanna say one thing, though, uh, I have to, um, commend you on the work that you've been doing with that, because it is a tremendous amount of work, on not only all the things that you mentioned, but also the things that you don't mention, such as, um, all the insurance certificates, all the building permits, and everything else that you have to make sure is in, in place, uh, so all that, I mean, it is, it's, it's a tremendous amount of work, and, uh, I think, uh.
Oh, thank you.
We're grateful for that.
It should be, I hope it's gonna be a great event, I mean, I shouldn't say hope, it, it, weather permitting, that block party is gonna be a blast. Um, we have, uh, most of the bands, I think we're, now we're just one more band away, and I just got an email, I think we have that, so we're all, uh, set there, and everything is really starting to line up nicely. Um, we've got, over the last week, we've had some major contributions come in, which is, again, making me sleep a little bit easier, so we're, we're still a little shy, but, um, I think we'll get there, and we've got six more months to go, you know, for the fundraising piece, so.
Good. Okay, with that, those committee reports, so what we'll do is we'll jump up to, uh, Town Administrators' Report.
Just an update to, um, volunteer applications, Conservation Commission, have we received any more?
Nope, just a one.
You know what, Phil, I, I, I would, if I could, just wanna get one thing on the record for, you know, so that it's kinda clear, and that's the financials, so, I'm gonna give Sue a copy of this spreadsheet, but, um, because this is a town, you know, committee, I think it's kind of important to let people know.
Okay.
Where the money is kinda coming and going. We have, as of now, it'll probably be, at the end of the day, a- all of our celebrations is gonna be about a forty thousand dollar budget. And if you recall, last year and this year, we contributed five thousand dollars, you know, towards that, so it's about thirty thousand dollars of private monies, uh, that, that are, that we're, that we're trying to, uh, to go after here, and I'll, I'll leave a copy with, with Sue. But in terms of, like, individual budgets, um, the biggest one is the block party, and the block party and the fireworks is about a twenty-five thousand dollar expense, the, the fireworks alone are seventy-five hundred dollars, and the block party in terms of the music, the stage, all of the kids, of the entertainment, because we're actually renting two stages, um, all of that, um, is about sixteen thousand dollars or so. Then we've got some smaller events where, you know, it's a smaller budget, we're having a concert at Roy Park with an ice cream social, that's a twelve hundred dollar budgeted expense. Our gala ball is a, probably gonna be about an eighty-five hundred dollar event, but that's offset by ticket prices, so, largely. So, um, I just wanted, I'll, I'll leave this with Sue, actually, I'll email you a copy of it.
Okay.
Which will be easier, but I, I believe it's important to at least let, you know, the community, I mean, this is.
Yeah.
There are donations, and, and people, you know, kinda need, you know, need to know that, but, um, and just for everyone's, again, so everything is out in the open here, we've budgeted around three thousand dollars for all the music that we have. Um, we've budgeted two thousand dollars for our, um, kids area, um, portable porta-potties, a thousand dollar budget for that, uh, kid stage is eleven hundred dollars, sound system seventeen hundred and fifty, seven, one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, um, our stage is eighteen hundred dollars, publicity is a thousand, kids entertainment fifteen hundred, signs, signage, um, five hundred, table and chairs, five hundred, and then we have a contingency of two thousand, so, um, that gets to around sixteen thousand two fifty-ish, so that's kind of where we're at, um, and then the fireworks are seventy-five hundred, so, it's, it's going, it's going pretty well, I just, but I just wanted, it's important, I think we just.
Okay, yeah, that's.
You know, let everybody know what the finances are.
Nick?
Question, are we, are you doing any type of, of remote parking, shuttling?
Yeah, we're having parking, um, we entered into a sponsorship with, uh, one of our sponsors is gonna be, uh, Gulfstown Truck Center, and they're gonna be providing shuttle, shuttles that are gonna be picking up people at the Villa, Barnard Park, and the High School, and they'll be shuttling in here. We're, we're toying with the idea of shuttling on the other side, but there's just not a, we thought about the notion of shuttling from the Glen Lake School, but there's really only like fifty spots there, just didn't make a ton of sense, whereas at the High School, there's, there's over four hundred, um, and the Villa, there's, I think there's well over a hundred there, and so, um, that's, that's the only thing that, and then we, you know, there are a lot of communities that do these type of events, and I know that might sound crazy for some, but people will walk a half a mile, miles, you know, we talked about that, I know in my hometown, that's what we did, um, so, we're, we, we do plan on having a shuttle, and that's part of the logistics that we have, there'll be, I think, two shuttle buses that'll always, that'll be making a continuous loop every ten minutes.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Scott? Okay, move on to the Town Administrators' Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, your weekly meeting schedule is in your packet, it's sewer commission tomorrow night, Wednesday's Budget Committee, and Thursday Planning Board. Your consensus folder tonight includes AP warrants, employee status reports for seasonal labors, event permits for the Roy Park Summer Concert, Ice Cream Social, that was just mentioned on July twenty-third, car wash fundraiser for St. Anthony's School on May twenty-first, and a car wash fundraiser, cancer relay on May fifteenth, uh, New England Relay Event Permit approved by the Board of Selectmen, DOT requires signature of the Board's Chair on, uh, one of their forms. Inter municipal agreements for your signature tonight is dispatch for New Boston Fire, dispatch for Ware Fire, prosecutorial services for Francis Town, and the BM, B and M Corp for the, uh, tower space, and the hour amendment to include Pine Ridge Drainage, that form is also in your consensus folder.
We need a motion to accept.
Motion, uh, to accept the consensus folder. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Thank you, and the assessor recommends two thousand and ten tax year abatements on map one lots thirty-five A and thirty-six, max map seven lot one eleven A dash two dash one fifty-one, map nine lots eighty-four dash three and eighty-four dash four, and denial of an abatement is recommended on map six lot twenty-two forty-two. The intent of Timmercutt that was in your packet, um, designer, the author of that, has pulled that for now. And Scott's going down to take a look at it, and I'll get back to you on, with an update next week on that.
Okay.
Motion to accept the, uh, assessor's recommendation. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you, um, as required, the tax collector presents the two thousand and ten tax lien notifications, they were in your FYI folder, the lien amount was five hundred ninety-nine thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents, and she gave a breakout on how much was property taxes, sewer and betterment, um, and it is down ten percent from last year.
At this time?
At this time.
It's an improvement.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right. Yep.
Um, another FYI is, uh, the cost for the demolition of the structures at Mountain Base, Cal reports the total demolition costs for the two structures, including asbestos removals, thirteen thousand five hundred, this will be, uh, charged to the bulky waistline, so it may be overspent. The papers have been filed with DES, and there's a ten day waiting period, and also he wanted to note that it was too wet in April to do this, to get the equipment in there.
Question?
Two questions on that, on the thirteen five, is that, is that, who would be performing the service for, doing every, doing?
I think the vendor is Claude D'Angelo.
And are they taking, taking the whole structure away, or doing portions of it, or is that?
The whole thing.
Uh, so that's the whole thing, so in other words, as far as we're concerned, DPW won't be involved with this one?
They might be involved if there's any, uh, septic or, uh, well to, to close it according to DES best practices.
And do, do we have a rough idea or date when they're, do we doing this?
Um, well, we were gonna wait for the ten day waiting period, it was filed, I think, the end of last week.
Okay, I mean, and with anticipation, if the ten day waiting period goes through, are we talking a month, or, I'm just trying to get an idea.
I, I think it would be done by the mid-June.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Um, two water road update, this property has been noticed for tax dealing to the property owner and the financial institutions that have been involved, it seems mortgage has been changed banks. As you may recall, the structure fell in several years ago, and the owner was attempting to rehab it, the lot would not be a building lot under today's zoning ordinance, um, as it's only point one eight acres. There are two abutters to this property who may be interested in purchasing it, however, by law, the town cannot dispose of the property for ninety days, as the town would be required, um, to give a ninety day notice to the former owner, in the event they wanted to buy it back. Problem is, we can't find the current owners, we've had the several addresses, but, um, the mail comes back, it's undeliverable. Options for the board, um, town could approach the abutters to determine their interest in acquiring the property, um, but my experience has been, you should set up conditions for that, and, um, what, and in this particular structure, I would suggest you, they would have to have it removed within a certain period of time, um, that the well and septic system must be closed in accordance with the DES best practices, the lot would then be merged with the abutters lot, and I think the minimum bid, um, should be our overdue property taxes of six thousand seven hundred and seventy, which includes interest and fees, or whatever it will be at that point in time that we go out. There's pros and cons on each of these options, this one, uh, the town recovers its taxes, and the town doesn't invest in the cleanup effort, and the lot is merged with the abutters lot. Cons, um, town would assume ownership for ninety days, and our insurance has exclusions for certain exposures, which may exist with this property. So we're trying to get that determined, Southern Hampshire Planning Services, um, said if we can get an application in next week, that they may be able to do a level one assessment for us, environmental assessment, to determine if there's any, um, hazards there that would prevent us from taking it. But it needs to be cleaned up, whether there is or isn't, it needs to be cleaned up. But it needs to be cleaned up, whether there is or isn't, it needs to be cleaned up.
Dave? How do we proceed with the ninety-day notice? Is that as simple as something as a newspaper notice?
Yes. We, we send a certify to the last known address, and it will come back like our tax stealing letter came back, but we serve it the same way, plus we put a notice in newspaper to...
Would it be a newspaper of the community of that last known address?
Well, we, you'd put it in the statewide, statewide newspaper, a legal notice. Do those names and any heirs to the estate, if that's the case.
Can we co-own?
Co-own?
Can we own it with an abutter?
I don't know how we'd do that.
I don't know how you would do that.
What am I saying, like, I'm just, well, Steve and I can buy a piece of property together, jointly. Could we jointly buy this, take, have this property with an abutter who is actually interested in buying it?
I don't think so. I think the liability insurance would become an issue.
Because one of the things that I'm concerned about is that it would be great if, so if we have an abutter who wants to buy it, for, in, in exchange for, you know, the back taxes, et cetera, but in short of that, then we're just tearing this thing down, and we own it, and...
Yeah, well, I would not suggest doing that unless you had, like, an...
We knew we had a purchase and sale agreement or something.
Exactly, before.
Okay, so really, the only avenue here are these two abutters, because there's nobody in their right minds going to buy a piece of property they can't develop anything on.
Right, and my experience has been, when the town has done this in the past, and sold something that was either landlocked, or, it just creates a nightmare for your land use ports, did you, you know, because the person buys it, even though you say, you make no representations, buildable lot, they're expecting to be able to do something with it, and then they come back in, and they're before the ZBA, for a variance, a special exception, and...
Right, and if there's absolutely nothing they can do on it, then how do, how does the town justify taxing them?
Right.
Is it within the shoreline?
Ooh, yes. Definitely. I mean, it's like right there, I can show you pictures on my computer, it break, it's right there, it's very visible from the river.
You're about two feet off, off the side of...
High tide or low tide?
Yeah, you're in the water, yeah.
Yeah.
A little bit of a drop to the water, but you're there.
Okay.
Option two is if the town, again, you explore the abutters' interest in the property for costs, which would include the town's costs in cleaning it up, so the town would budget to clean it up, and, but negotiate with the abutters, saying, you know, it's going to cost the cleanup costs, plus our back taxes, to buy the property, and then you have that assurance that it's done, that's the pro there, and you don't have that ninety-day liability period.
Well, one, one thing I don't quite follow, if by statute, we have to have ninety days, how does that mitigate that liability exposure, because it seems to me...
Because we're going to clean it up immediately.
Yeah, but still, okay, it doesn't...
We're going to take it, and when we take it, we're going to have the cleanup scheduled the day after, so the cleanup starts, and even if in ninety days, the owner comes back, he has to pay our costs, which includes cleanup and...
Which one do you recommend, Sue?
Which one do I recommend? I guess I like the idea of budgeting for it next year, and cleaning it up to make sure it gets done.
What happens between now and then?
Unless we can get a grant to do the cleanup, and that's another possibility, if we get this level-one assessment, and if they determine this as its material, then we might be able to get like a brownfields grant to have it cleaned up.
Nick?
Do we, do we know if the abutters are interested?
Yes. Both have come down to town hall and talked to the tax collector and expressed an interest. But they would want, they realize it's a big project, and so if they're going to be responsible with cleanup, they want enough time to do the cleanup.
Let me see, something, I mean, regarding the cleanup costs, I'm not sure what the twenty thousand came from, but I know that prior to that we're doing up by, by the pond, or thirteen five, and the structure here is not as old as those structures, and I don't even think it amounts to the size of the other two combined, so I'm not sure with it, how it came to twenty on this one, just, just, just trying to...
Because the others are easy access, they're flat, they're not falling into a big sinkhole. Are you talking about the ones at the Mountain Base?
Yeah, I mean, even that hole that we talked about, the hole, it's not a, it's...
Well, there's a lot of unknowns.
With an excavator, but I'm saying that it was, it was a more recent structure, I'm saying I don't think you're going to find the same problems that you would have found in those other two, and actually, I thought it was an easier access personally, but I just have questions that when you do talk with, if we do decide to talk with the abutters, I think that amount is probably high, which, you know, I'm...
Yeah, I'm not getting some revised numbers for us now, but that was the last estimate we had. So, how would the board like to go forward?
I, I want to see something happen here, I mean, this is another one of these eyesores that needs to get taken care of, so I'm okay with either option, I would probably lean towards two.
If you don't lean towards two, then the issue comes up.
I know, the liability.
Yeah.
Right, so that's why I'm leaning towards two, but you know what, sometimes you have to, you know, sometimes you might have, it's going to happen, so sometimes you might have a liability thing for ninety days, and we'll live with it for ninety days.
Nick, question? Is there still a mortgage, this Washington Mutual?
Yeah.
And it's being paid?
No.
So is, is there a possibility that maybe the two abutters can deal directly with the bank to purchase it?
The, the bank didn't foreclose on these people, so they are still the owners of record, because the bank didn't want to take on liability.
Yeah, they don't want it.
But if they knew the abutters were interested, in other words, maybe the bank can deal with the abutters and take it out of our hands, private sale between the abutters and the bank.
That's a good point.
But will it get cleaned up?
Yeah, what year are we in, though, in the tax?
It would have to get cleaned up, because the bank would not want that on their, you know, oh, they're, they're going to sell it off, but...
Same thing.
Yeah, the, the bank's not going to care whether it's cleaned up, we're the ones that care that it's cleaned up.
Right.
Well, we have other means to make sure it gets cleaned up, once we have an owner that's there.
Yeah, but if they deal directly with the owners?
The current bank that we have, I don't know if this is the one, one of them says, we don't know if we own it.
That's what they said?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can believe that.
It reminds me back in the early nineties, when all the banks were changing hands and...
I'm just thinking, that might be an avenue to explore.
So, that actually would be option three, and option three on here, which is do nothing, would become option four. So that might be something that might be worth exploring a little bit, just to see, because that might lead, leave us completely out of the...
I think we should still explore the brownfields.
Oh, no, I'm not...
Whether we own it or they own it, it's still a, just to assure it gets done and cleaned up.
No, I agree, the only thing is, is if it becomes brownfields within, this could go on for five years.
I, I understand the benefits of this, the new proposal three, however, it's bringing a new party into the negotiation.
It might take forever.
And they're starting from point zero, and it could drag out, depending on whether they really have any interest in pursuing it.
Well, the issue is, they don't even know if they own it.
Yes, and they may not.
They may not even own it.
And they would have to be happy with almost, at the day that the property, they assume the ownership on a certain day, the, the abutters have to be there at the same table, buying the property, and, you know, all that coordination, starting from point zero, could take a while. I would prefer option two over option one, that way we, we know it's going to get done.
Okay.
The other question I had, is there a possibility of going, as Steve was mentioning, could, could that be put out to bid? I mean, if the town is going to...
Put what out to bid?
The cleanup.
Yes.
Okay, that's what Carl would do.
I'd say, I think, that never, that never surprises me, having done, I've done these before, and also seen what we're paying at the other one, at the other place, and I kind of know this, I know this property, and, you know, we say the whole...
It may be less.
I, I think it's a, it's a very generous...
I think it's the unknowns. There's also...
Hazardous, if you have hazardous waste, then the whole, everything you take out of there, it has to be then dumped out.
It's a much newer structure compared to the ones that you're dealing with up on...
There's, there's two fifty-five gallon drums on site. I, I don't know if it's, I don't know the bounds of that property.
Vegetable oil.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. That's the end, so we're all set here?
Any emotion on this, or?
Yeah, we should. Yeah, we gotta get this thing going.
I'll make a motion to recommend option two.
Second.
Are we going to just explore option three?
I'm not, after hearing what?
What about, what about the, the grant that she was talking about? We're still going to pursue that, though?
Yeah, well, there has to be contamination, so the, the level one has to get done for us to determine if there's any contamination, otherwise it's not eligible for brownfields.
That can happen concurrently.
Okay, but as long as, as long as that's...
Right, when you said option three, I thought you're meaning the bank option.
Right, that's what you...
At least explore it and find out if the abutters...
I, I have to agree with Selectman Pierce on this one, I, I think it's a, it's a noble gesture, but I think it's going to put us into another two-to-three month tailspin on an issue that's been on our radar for two years, so I'd just assume, go the route of going to option two, and if, if it is a level-one site, and if we can get funding to dispose of it, great, if we can't, then we budget for it and move on.
Okay, but I have one question, though, on option three, who's paid the taxes? Who's the...
Nobody, no.
No, no, the last payment for taxes. Was it from this mortgage company?
No, not the new one.
Okay, so this, this mortgage company has never made a tax payment? Okay.
I, I, I think something got lost in the whole transfer from one bank to the other, when one bank is suing the others.
A lot of things got lost.
So I just want to understand this, we're going to have an abutter who's agreed to pay twenty-seven thousand dollars for eight thousand square feet of land that they can't do anything with?
Well, they can merge, when they merge it with their property...
They can do something.
Then they could probably subdivide with a, in accordance with current zoning.
And the Shoreland Protection Act.
Right. There's one abutter that goes right up to the road, on Back Road. So he probably just used that piece as frontage to the lake.
And arguably, we would be getting taxes from that individual on that parcel, at least.
Well, it would be merged with his parcel.
It would be merged, but you'd be getting, still getting more property tax, which you're not getting anything right now.
Right.
It would be a seven-year probably recovery of the money, but...
Okay, so there's been a motion, has there been a second?
A second.
Yeah, there's a second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstaining? It's four, one, zero. Okay, that's done? No, we, we have a seven o'clock schedule?
I do have one other thing to discuss later, though.
Okay, yeah, no, we'll do that after the public hearing, we have a scheduled public hearing. It's the first of two public hearings, the next one is five twenty-three, and a vote is scheduled for six-six, two thousand and eleven. And Chief, are you going to be presenting this?
Yes.
Okay, with that, we had a public notice, and that is, hang on one second. A legal notice for this public hearing was in the New Hampshire Union Leader Friday, April twenty-ninth, two thousand and eleven, on page B seven. And in compliance with RSA forty-one colon fourteen dash B, the Board of Selectmen announced public hearings on five ninth, two thousand and eleven, and five twenty-three, two thousand and eleven, at seven PM, at Town Hall, sixteen Main Street, Goffstown, New Hampshire, to accept public input on amendments to the Glen Lake ordinance. Copy of the proposed ordinance is available online at www.goffstown.com or at the town clerk's office. Any person with a disability who needs a reasonable accommodation, please call the Town Hall, four nine seven eight nine nine zero, extension one hundred, at least seventy-two hours to, in advance for arrangements.
There are copies available here tonight.
And they're all copies, if you guys are all set? Okay, great. With that, I'm going to open a public hearing, and Chief Patrick Sullivan will be presenting the ordinance.
I'll skip over the title and the authority, the declaration of purpose is for Goffstown residents only, and that's the major change to this. We've incorporated the existing Glen Lake ordinances into this ordinance, there will be a resident sticker required, we are suggesting that a town dump sticker or a transportation sticker to be used as that. The no trespassing will be from ten PM to five AM on the land presently known as the waterfront of Glen Lake. No alcoholic beverages, they'll be prohibited, as well as glass, there is no littering, be deposited, and the appropriate receptacles are removed from the site, no lifeguard on duty, parking designated only, areas only, which are currently marked. And we're also working, in addition to this, with the school, for them to set up a policy of resident-only parking during those times as well.
Okay. Any questions of the board members of the chief? If not, I'm going to open it up to the public. Open it up to the public, any members of the public? And Guy, would you need your name for the record?
Thank you very much, Guy Karen, I live at two thirty-eight Elm Street. First, I want to begin to thank the board for your efforts in putting this ordinance together to address some of the issues that are going on over at the lake. I've read it over, and I've only got one comment regarding content in section three and four, and that would be the dates that you've got proposed. My recommendation, instead of resident-only parking from June fifteen to Labor Day, I would strongly suggest you consider May fifteen to September fifteen for a couple of reasons. One, it seems a little inconsistent to restrict parking on only two of the three major summer holidays. And I think you'll find, this coming Memorial Day, you're going to see, actually, you may see it this coming weekend, because I understand the forecast is for very warm weather. You all know I'm a resident of the lake, and I can tell you, the temperature is what is going to initiate crowding at the beach long before June fifteen. So I, I would urge you to consider making that change, because you're going to find that, you're going to have problems over at that beachfront long before June fifteen, especially considering that the lake, normally, they'll put the flashboards up and raise the lake level to summertime levels around mid-May, and that brings even more traffic there. So that would be my recommendation, other than that, I'd also like to thank the school board, because I know they're doing the same thing with the, with the Glen Lake School. Keith Hallard, who was the chairman last year, had called me, and they had already decided last year they were going to start restricting parking there. That would be it, other than to invite all five of you at any time, this weekend, if you want, I'm going to be home, want to come by, we'll take a walk over if it's warm, and I think you'll see that June fifteen might be a little bit late in the game. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, good evening, for the record, my name's Colas Adams, I live at sixteen Wallace Road here in Goffstown, and I want to echo Guy Karen's comments, and thank you for finally taking this on, I think, I think it's, it's time to put this sort of an ordinance in place. I would also echo his comments relative to the timeframe, I think May fifteenth to September fifteenth is a much more realistic timeframe to implement this ordinance, for the reasons that Guy Karen stated. Certainly Memorial Day is when we see the biggest increase in usage at the lake, and as he said, there are three major holidays, Memorial Day, July fourth, and Labor Day weekend, this encompasses two of them, but not the third, so I just think that's a more appropriate timeframe. I have a number of other comments, a lot of them are editorial in nature, as many or all of you know, I work for a state agency, so I'm used to crafting legislation and administrative rules, although I'm not a lawyer, I just play when at work, and there are certain ways to put these things together, so a lot of this is editorial in nature, and I apologize, I don't have a copy I can, to leave with you, it's all in my hand scratching, but I'd be happy to do that and forward it through, perhaps Sue, tomorrow, if that's all right, if I can...
Yeah, that'll be fine.
I couldn't do it with word tracking, because it's a PDF document, so if it's easier for me to do that, and if you want to send it to me in a word...
In Word?
Okay. That way I won't go through all the little nuances here, there's some commas out of place, and some, some words that I think need to be changed. But to hit some of the other highlights, in section three, it talks about the ordinances, and there's a word missing, I think it should say, the ordinance is intended to promote a more orderly use, that true, I agree, that's one purpose, I think the other significant purpose is to limit impacts to sensitive natural areas. If you remember, ten, twelve years ago, when we started the planning, Conservation Commission took... If you remember, ten, twelve years ago, when we started the planning, Conservation Commission took on this project to plan this, we secured grant monies. And we were able to secure those because we were going to correct problems and impacts to natural areas specifically along the shoreline and the impacts that that causes to water quality on Glen Lake. So I think it's important that we recognize that, yes, we do want to promote a more orderly use, but we also wanna, I think, limit impacts to those sensi- sensitive natural areas on the property, because again, that is reflective of why we did this eleven, eleven, twelve years ago in the first place. It talks about, in, uh, in the same section, section three, uh, cup, uh, one, two, three, the fourth line down, it says it's intended to prevent over-parking at Glen Lake School by non-residents using the waterfront area. Well, if non-residents cannot use it, why is that statement in the ordinance? It doesn't seem to make sense, because it's clear that the intent of the ordinance is residents only, yet we talk about to prevent overuse by non-residents when they're not allowed to use it in the first place. And again, I won't go through all of it, uh, down at the end of section three, it, it use, it refers to as a waterfront at Glen Lake Beach, and beach, the word beach ought to be stricken. But again, I won't get into all those editorial changes. It talks about, in section four, that the folks must have a Goffstown resident sticker, and I heard the chief talk about the transfer station sticker, and I think that's a great place to start. But what about folks who are residents who, for, for instance, might live in an apartment complex and don't use the transfer station because they have private collection of their trash? I mean, those people are residents of Goffstown, uh, and appears, and I believe they ought to be able to enjoy the use of the waterfront as well. So I think there needs to be some accommodations for those folks who may not have transfer station stickers on, on their vehicles.
They can still get one.
They can still get one.
Okay.
There's no cost.
Okay, thanks, that clarifies that.
Anybody, any resident can get a transfer station sticker.
Okay. All right, thank you. When it says no trespassing, it says there, no trespassing between ten and five on the la- on the land presently known as. It seems to me we might wanna define that a little more clearly, uh, as to lots, portions of lots, some sort of descriptive bounds so that we know when people are within this area that's known as the waterfront at Glen Lake. And I think that's gonna help a lot with enforcement, um, Chief, so that you know when somebody's, you know, in the area where this applies and when they're not. And that's just a suggestion, I don't know how to define it, I'd have to look at down tax maps and find where, how the parcels are delineated. I don't know if we can refer to it as, uh, tax map and lot numbers, or perhaps portions of lot defined by some physical feature or boundaries or barriers on the property. But I think, uh, in the long run, it would be good if we could clearly identify the actual area that we're talking about. That's it, rest is just editorial nature. And I'll get those changes for you, thank you.
Yes, Nick?
Just a quick question to the chief along those lines. I know for a resident, a private citizen, in order to keep someone off your property, you have to clearly post no trespassing. So that they know the boundaries. Do we have the same requirement along the boundaries of that area to, to post it? So an individual would know, I'm on town property or I'm not on town property.
The signs we currently have have been standing up in court, the one sign. Uh, my suggestion would be to post in at least two other places in addition to where we currently post it, one on each end.
I just had an additional comment.
Sure.
Uh, just to make, based on what you had mentioned, that I think you're scheduled to take a vote on this in June?
Yes.
If, if at all possible, I might suggest that if this board does decide to alter the dates, as Carlos and I have recommended, that you might wanna try to take the vote right away. You can't?
No.
Okay, because you know what's gonna happen, I'm afraid, is that a lot of people are gonna come in, they're gonna use it on Memorial Day, and then they're gonna come rolling right back on the Fourth of July and not realize that there's been a change, you know? So anyways, I just wanted to make that suggestion, I didn't realize that you couldn't do it.
If I could offer a comment at this point, then, um, the, the decision date will be as of what we announced. Then at that point, Public Works will have signs fabricated, which may take a week, ten days.
At least.
A week, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we can't do anything before the signage goes up anyway.
They can't make the signs now, 'cause we don't know what exactly will be in the fine print of those signs.
Got it. Okay, gentlemen, thank you.
You're welcome. Chief?
The only concern I have about the May fifteenth date is, I think we had discussed it earlier, is school parking. Um, if I have teachers parking at Glen Lake School during the day, and they do not live in Goffstown, they're subject to being ticketed. Because it doesn't specify on the weekends or the other day, it just specifies. And that's why we're shooting for June, to hopefully get school done or very close to being done and work from there.
Any other questions, Chief?
Just a question for that regarding that, then. Um, I underst- I understand what you're saying regarding the May fifteenth, looking at that weekend. And I think, I mean, I guess what I would be looking at there is that I think it's a difference when a week, when a warm weekend comes versus, versus during, during school, that if some people are parking at, at the kindergarten versus where you see the whole beachfront loaded up with cars, I think, would, would we differentiate for that?
I cannot do that, it's still, if it's an ordinance, it's an ordinance.
Nick?
Even if the vehicles are parked there for school business, because they're teachers?
Again, it could be for school business, yes, but are they visiting? Are they doing the school play? Is a grandma coming to see, you know, a kindergartner performing at a play or something? I mean, there's a whole variety of things that could happen.
So we're saying that the, the parking at the kindergarten is overloading into the parking at Glen Lake, is that?
No, 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 no.
We're just talking, I just wanna make sure we're talking the parking at the kindergarten?
Right, part of this will incorporate the policy from the school board. That there'll be no parking.
I'm just trying to.
That's a big issue.
Scott?
I, I would concur with the public comment with regard to the date, and I think that there, we should consult with the town attorney. In the meantime, I think we, I, I would like to take action on this thing as soon as we can. But it seems to me that we, we could, we should be able to craft it so that the school is not impacted, so it's not an enforcement issue. So if it is for school purposes only, then that's okay. But if it's not, and I think the big issue is that the kindergarten is not open on Saturdays and Sundays. So somehow this thing just needs to get crafted to say that during hours of school operation, yeah, I mean, that's when.
There's also summer school that we're dealing with at the school as well.
Right. Which again is during school.
Right, but it's after June fifteenth.
Right, that's after June fifteenth as well, though.
Dealing with it.
Right. I, I'm not so sure that, the other thing I'm gonna say is, there's so much that we can, there's only so much that we can do, because it's a school. But the other thing that we can do is those spots that are also, you know, the, whatever, those twelves, how many spots are out in front? Seventeen that are, that are there, so I'm not, I think we can put our thinking caps on it to remedy that. But I, I do think that the, the June fifteenth can be problematic as well, because school is going till the twenty-third this year, or twenty-fourth or something like that. So I, I would, I think it's a good idea to make, to bump it back.
And just a quick question, is there any way for May fifteenth, for the major weekends, we could have some flyers or something made up that we can put on those vehicles? Basically saying, be aware that this ordinance is in the process and on this date, the board will be voting to prohibit non-resident parking? Just giving people who are actually parking there a heads up?
I would almost think that we would be in better position to let it go its course and then give warnings or something, you know, efforts implemented if someone is there, rather than just laying them the hammer. I'd rather, this way they know, the sign will be there, but maybe give them a warning, next time you're gonna get ticketed. Because it's, you, you'd have to then have somebody go by like every couple hours and put flyers on cars, it's gonna, I don't know.
I have one, um, is there a comment, any other comment from the public?
Yeah, I just had a, a suggestion on what we were discussing as far as the, uh, the school, uh, handling, you know, visiting, uh, visitors to the school, teachers, um, parents coming in for plays, et cetera, that the issuance of permanent parking vouchers that you display on the dashboard for teachers and employees, or even temporary dated ones for those occasions where you have either summer classes or you have a play that the parents are coming in for, should help resolve the situation. Especially if it's date, you know, the secretary can handle it out, day or for the afternoon, and that way there's the chief and his crew, his officers will know at the time. There's a permanent park, teachers pass sitting on the dash, so that car is okay. Just a suggestion.
I just had a question for the chief. Chief, have you seen what the school board, they had the first read of their policy at their first meeting in May, and they're gonna have the second read of that policy regarding parking at Glen Lake School, um, at their first meeting in June? Have you seen what that policy is?
I presented him this, and it's pretty much a mirror image of what we have dealing with the school property only.
Okay. When they do their readings, is it a public hearing, or is it?
Yes, it is.
It is, okay.
Dave?
I've had an email from an individual I'd like to present to the board on this subject, uh, is from Jeffrey Litchfield. He's the president of the Blue Steel Triathlon Club. It's a group of sixty-plus athletes who live in the greater Manchester area. He was advised, uh, that there's a pending town ordinance, uh, which would ban parking on Elm Street during the summer season, uh, for non-residents. Our group, as well as others, have used the Glen Lake for our open water swims.
Quite of order, please, Mr. Chairman. Is testimony on one of our public hearings from somebody outside of Goffstown allowed?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Public hearing.
Uh, typically, our group meets early mornings, five A M. to eight A M. during the week, Monday through Friday. We park in the spots which are adjacent to the beach area along Elm Street. It's convenient to swim there, as typically, there's very little boat traffic, and most either head home directly afterwards, or are members of the Alad Center, where they change and then head off to work. It's safe to say that we are best friends of the Glen Lake, and, um, we use that facility. We don't linger, we don't cause parking problems, other than using the porta potty. It would be a shame if we could no longer use the beach area, because we're not residents of Goffstown. We look forward to an opportunity to discuss this. A thought would be to limit the ban during certain hours, as, uh, other than our group, other occasional fishermen could use the facility.
Nick?
I remember when we discussed this over and over again, we had, um, an email either from that group or another group, similar group, and the beach itself is not non-resident, it's parking. Did you say there was a triathlon?
He's the president of the Blue Steel Triathlon Group.
So suggesting maybe they could bike there. And, I mean, it's just, it's, it's not prohibiting the use of the beach, it's just prohibiting the parking.
And what he is suggesting is that this restriction could be, uh, not only all day, but the restriction could be from nine in the morning to nine at night. That would allow, like in this case, the athletic group using the, uh, lake for their training at dawn every day, would still put a specific time as to when non-residents would not be allowed to park.
Other comment?
Just a comment on that email, if I may. I'm familiar with that group. When we were organizing to reconstruct that area, we approached that group on more than one occasion and asked them to submit, to, to, um, donate some, some of their man-hours, some of their effort, or even some money to buy some of the landscaping material. They didn't donate one hour of their time, not one dollar of their money, to improve that area. It wasn't until it was improved that they started showing up and using it on a more regular basis, because now it was clean, it was easier for them to park. So that's just an observation relative to that group, and I approached them on more than one occasion to assist with the refurbishment of that area down there. Guy, any point of clarification, how, Chief, how many spaces are there at the Glen Lake School, do we know?
I don't have a register in front of me.
I thought there was twenty-eight.
It's like thirty, I think, in my office.
So all of them would be available on weekends, or are we, are we suppo- are we proposing to designate a certain number of them for, for use?
No, none of them.
None of them.
No.
Oh, none of them?
No, no, no.
No, for residents, I'm talking about.
Right, for residents.
So all of the spaces could be used by residents?
That's gonna be up to the school board.
I'm just trying to.
We have no jurisdiction over it.
I'm just trying to put in perspective, we now have seventeen that are used for the waterfront. Are we doubling it, tripling it, quadrupling it? But it doesn't sound like a real significant increase.
We have, we have no jurisdiction over that, that's, that's what the issue is.
Again, I just want, I'm just trying to order magnitude of numbers.
We've made the observation last year that, uh, the waterfront overcrowding is probably due to non-residents. Technically, we face the same risk of the, uh, the seventeen spots in the entire Glen Lake being filled with residents, which would still lead to the overcrowding of the beach.
Yeah, I agree.
That's a risk that we'll have to play with.
With, with my thought on, um, the impacts to the natural resources, you know, if we take seventeen and if there were a hundred spaces at the school, I would approach it a little differently, but if it's just thirty, then I don't see that as a significant increase.
Okay, any other questions?
Just the timeframe again, uh, we kick, it goes from here to the.
Another here.
Yeah, that's gonna be on, on the twenty-third, and then we vote on the sixth, June sixth.
It's all by the statute, you have to follow those.
Ten to fourteen days apart.
Right.
All right, so.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? If not, I'm gonna close the public hearing at seven twenty-nine. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay, we'll go back to the town administrator's report.
Thank you, this one isn't in your packets, um, but I did get a letter from the EPA reminding us that we had a two thousand and nine congressional earmark, uh, Stag Grant. And it's an earmark, we haven't formally applied, because we, um, we were holding that one to see how many hookups we had in Lynchville-Danis Park. And if we used up the first grant, then we were gonna apply for the second grant, or if we got close. We haven't gotten close. The first grant, uh, was for around three hundred thousand, and I think we've used about a hundred thousand of it. So there's still plenty there, and I think our deadline was October two thousand and eleven to apply for that. So I wanna remind everyone out there that if they wanna hook up water down Lynchville-Danis Park, there's still fifty-five percent match money through the Stag Grant, up to a cap of, what is it, thirty-five hundred?
Yeah.
Is that what we counted at, around there? So if, if they're interested in doing that, that expires in October two thousand and eleven. But, um, the reason they were calling us about the two thousand and nine Stag Grant is that we haven't formally applied. Um, and there's talk that there will be a congressional sweep, which, um, dissolves all, or eliminates all these un- unobligated funds. So, uh, that could go away in the near future, and they were wondering if we had any plans to use it for either water or sewer in that area. The only things I could think of, that we, we met with, uh, one group that was all in one parcel, but they said if it was a private group, that the funds couldn't be used. It has to be a public project. I told them we didn't have any public funds allocated, but if we had a developer willing to do, like, part of the sewer down there, and the developer paid for the forty-five percent match, would that be acceptable? And they said, yes, I, because that's much how it's working now, the residents are paying their forty-five percent, it's not the town money, for the water piece and the hookup. So that, that is a possibility, and we know of a developer who is looking to develop two large parcels down there, and I don't know if we should pursue that. But it would have to be pretty quick, because he was wondering if we had any projects in the work that could happen within the next month.
Todd, you got a comment?
No, I, I do, but it, it deals with land, and I think it'll be end or illegal, so it'll be a non-public discussion.
I just have one question, are there other options within, are there other options beyond that one?
For earmarks?
No.
For projects?
For that, for, yeah.
I don't know of any other proj- uh, sewer hasn't budgeted for any.
You're thinking about like a sidewalk or something, or?
No, I don't think.
It has to be water or sewer down in that area.
My understanding is a lot of water puddles in the, now sidewalk area, but.
No, no, I'm just, is there? But, yeah, it has to be related to that, to water or sewer.
Water or sewer.
Sewer in that area.
I know, and I'm just saying, were there other options regarding, regarding that funding besides, I don't know, can I go back and offset the original projects? Maybe I, I guess I'll put that out there.
Well, could that possibly be? Could that possibly be for drainage? Not necessarily potable water?
No.
Talk about sewer?
We tried that originally with this, and it couldn't be for that. It wa- it could be for sewer or for water. Actually, I think both of them were originally written for sewer, because that was the goal, but they allowed water because
Okay.
of the needs.
All right. So I guess we'll just see what happens. All right, is there anything else to your report?
That's it.
Do we have any other public business?
No.
No further public business, so then we'll need a motion, we'll be going to non-public, and then we'll be adjourning from that. So with that, we'll need a motion for non-public, RSA ninety-one dash A, colon three, Roman numeral two, A and E.
I'll make those motions that go in the non-public under A and E.
Is there any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, unanimous, roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
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 We are in non-public session, thank you, we'll be adjourning after the non-public session, thank you.